On April the 19th, 2021, the following letter with interrogatives was served to counsel at 6:30 PM in Coleport Borough Council chambers. The Vice President Kevin Swager was sitting at the President's seat at the council table when the foregoing letter was served. After reviewing the letter, the counselor rose from his seat exclaiming, "You punk, you punk, you punk!" In what appeared to be rage, made advances to your video reporter with one finger on each hand extended as a gun, middle finger on each hand, until he confronted the video reporter as if he was going to thrust the two fingers on each hand up the nose of the video reporter within an inch of the video reporter's nose. The counselor, the Vice President Kevin Swager, did not respond to the questions at any time. The following is the letter that was served. Interrogatives. Number one, do all the counselors of Coleport Borough have a criminal background certificate from the Pennsylvania State Police? Number two, Counselor Swager, have you ever used controlled substances? Number three, Counselor Swager, have you ever sold controlled substances? Number four, in the Altoona Mirror Tuesday, October 13, 2020, an article is as follows. Kevin M. Swager, 51, 507 Hickory Street, Coleport, charged by Logan Township Police with DUI, possession of drug paraphernalia, possession of controlled substance, and two traffic violations on November 29, 2019. The question in four is, has this issue been adjudicated? Number five, should all counselors complete a criminal background screening and serve to counsel a certificate of clearance by the Pennsylvania State Police? Respectfully submitted Reverend Gerald W. Spade, Sr. Thank you. The video of the April 19th, 2021 council meeting will now be presented.
In a locking binding book?
Yes, yes. Yeah, I know the minutes, that part I'm not sure on, but I know the minutes in that have to be here. I thought you locked your ordinances away.
It used to be 1:08, they changed it to 3,000 something.
Yes, right, I did just briefly. We will all have to review that so we all are on the same page and know what we're doing. So by the next workshop, what I'll do is I'll copy, I'll send that to everybody and give them the homework. You read these sections of the borough code so we know what we're doing. Now you figured out how to get it to stream live?
Yeah.
And we're not upside down, inside out, side by side?
It's gonna be sideways only because the camera will be wider for everybody to get in.
The camera's not gonna be a big blind.
I mean, the people aren't horizontal, was what I meant. I'm not gonna be here.
No, they should be.
Yeah.
Yeah, they should be right set up.
You ready to call the order? Call the order, Coleport Special Meeting, Coleport Borough Special Meeting, April 19th. So I guess we wanna, we're just gonna jump into everything and, you know. So I have a couple of letters here, resignations from Barbie Trent, President, Robert Lee, Councilman, and Andrew for resignation. They're already here somewhere. She was fine, but neither. But we're good to go on that, yeah. So we gotta get a motion. You ask for a motion. Okay, I need a motion to accept the resignations, the three resignations. And Robert, and Robert, um, we have one here from Robert and Barbie and Noel.
Can we hear the statements?
We're going to post it, there's too many of them. I'm sorry, I shouldn't say that. We'll post everything. There's too much to read and, uh... And Diane, did you want Diane's copy? Yeah, Barbie Trent. We wanna be more transparent. Robert Lee and Noel Morrissey. And Andrew Morrissey. I don't have a, I don't have a letter from him, but...
A question was asked, where are you gonna post it?
Where are they gonna be posting? On the borough's Facebook page. On the borough's Facebook page, so you can read them. The page, that page will be a lot different when we're done with it.
I heard that story before.
It'll be a lot different. We could probably put it out front, put it on YouTube, so...
I'll take pictures and post it tonight.
There you go.
That's right, we heard that story before too.
Right, right. This is a different council, so...
I heard that before too.
This is a different council. No, it's all gonna be just one.
I'm a citizen of this borough, I'm allowed in this.
Keep quiet now.
Okay, Kevin, how's the floor?
Order, yeah. Get a motion on the, uh, on the table to accept the resignations of the four people. Do I have a second?
Make a motion to...
Shoot, yeah. You make a second?
I'll second.
Second it by Mr. Yingling, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion accepted. Okay, uh, what else I need to do too is I need to appoint Paul Zupich and John Shawley to counsel by resolution. I need a motion for that, right? Nope, can I get a motion to, uh...
Make a motion to appoint Paul Zupich and John Shawley to counsel by resolution?
Okay, I need a second on that?
Yeah, I wanna, it wasn't done like this before, but the proper rules of order are to motion it, discuss it, and then second it. You don't discuss it after the motions are made. It's done then.
Okay, we got any discussion on it?
Yes.
We get a second?
Just for, just the borough members here.
A discussion can be...
Just the council, I get it. Any discussion on it? Can I get a second?
Yes, I get it.
Pass.
Kevin, quit doing that.
No, that's the way it's gonna be. Uh, now you've elected President, 'cause I don't wanna, hold on, she's gonna swear soon though.
You didn't vote on the last motion. We need to call for a vote.
Okay, can I get a vote on the...
For what?
For the last motion.
The last motion.
We have a motion and a second, but no vote.
Oh, he needs a vote, okay.
We're gonna have to follow this.
I can't hear.
You, uh, you wanna do a roll call or...
Okay. No, you don't have to.
A resolution requires a roll call vote.
Show us that, the voting roll.
What'd you, I'm sorry.
I'm just telling you if you're spending money.
Yeah.
No, you don't, yeah, you don't need a resolution for this.
Okay, we don't?
We don't.
Okay.
Okay, the motion is on the floor.
Motion's on the floor.
They want me to read it?
Yes, please.
Motion is on the floor to appoint Paul Zupich and John Shawley to counsel, and that's because of the two resignations. There's two...
You do need a resolution.
Yes, you do.
Okay, by resolution, now I'm in it, okay.
And then there's a roll call vote for a resolution.
Go ahead, yeah.
Listen to roll calls.
That's okay, whenever it comes up like that tonight, I will check with PSAB to make sure.
Okay.
You've done my part, it's better.
So we need, need a vote? All in favor? We doing a roll call or...
Resolution requires a roll call or a vote.
Do a roll call, it's better than nothing.
Okay, you want, you wanna, you wanna do it, the roll call?
Okay. Well, Dawn Yingling?
Yes.
Kevin Swager?
Yes.
Sean Yingling?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Unanimous, uh, who passes three votes, three to nothing. Okay, do you wanna swear those two in?
Uh, just as council people, sure.
Sure.
Oh, how about 8:01 that you're required to have an affidavit of...
We have all of it.
You have all that? Okay, thank you.
Okay, you wanna be first, Paul?
Can you do it at the same time, so we'll do it in harmony?
Yeah, we can.
As well, maybe we'll get a square, who knows?
I get a drop out of this. Okay, raise your right hand, please. And be after me. I... Okay, you solemnly swear...
Solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support.
Obey...
Obey.
And defend...
And defend.
Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge...
And that I will discharge.
The duties of council member...
The duties of council member.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Okay, very good.
All right. Congratulations. Congratulations, thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I gotta finish this. Do you wear it all on?
Yeah, I know, it gets cold.
Okay. I was down on my knees here, Sean.
You lifted weights?
Yeah, I thought I was lifting weights. Okay, thank you.
I didn't know what you were grabbing, I should have looked for you.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, we're also gonna have to, uh, elect the new President. So we're gonna have to, anybody wanna throw a name out there?
How can we get a new President when you're...
Well, I'm, he's the Vice, I'm the Vice President.
So don't he have to resign?
No. He's the Vice President. Now we elect the President.
President did resign.
Yeah. Somebody wanna make the motion for someone?
If I nominate Paul Zupich by motion, we're gonna elect the next President.
Any discussion with that? I get a second? Second it, Mr. Shawley? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes. You just stay right there, I'll just stay right here. That works for you. Yep. So now we have to appoint Mary Sue Huey as Secretary.
Thank you.
I need, which I need a motion for. If you want any discussion about appointing Mary Sue...
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to appoint Mary Sue Huey as our new Secretary.
Discussion has to be with... We should know that when it goes.
All right, yeah, I guess you wanna know about her wages. She's, both of these people were pushing us real hard for a high-powered salary of zero. So they're working for free and we work for nothing. We laugh at that. So anyway, we're real, we're real fortunate. Mary Sue's helped me out a lot before and so has Mike. They both hit the ground running. Yeah, I think that's, be two really good additions. Appreciate it, Mike, thank you. Mary Sue, thank you. So we need a, a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mary Sue.
Need a second?
I second it.
Is there any other discussion on this before we vote? No discussion, need a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, or any opposed? Zero. Okay, same with Mike. We need to appoint, Mike Delphos says, I call him Borough Supervisor, for lack of a better term. He has experience, he was once a township supervisor. So he knows the state, knows his way around. He'll be a good asset to us, hands-on kind of a guy. So I need a, I need a motion.
Summary?
Salary, go high once again. Yeah. Zero. Thanks, thanks, Mike, appreciate it. Thank Mary Sue, appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll make that motion to, uh, to appoint Mike Delphos as our Borough Supervisor.
Need a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, unanimous, yeah. Okay, now we also have to give both Mike and Mary Sue check writing privileges. So it requires two, two signatures, so they will both have to sign anything. And there's a mess down there at the bank, there's too many names that were never cleaned up. So when you go to the bank, you can clean that up and just... But never got that? What's that? As far as I know, that never got done.
It was, um, I think the last time somebody checked, there was like quite a few names on there that shouldn't have been on there. It's, I don't even know who they were, not to be here anymore.
We wanna get it down to two names.
Tyler said, just stand up command. Tyler said, give them a new card.
Basically, these people would be our management people. So they're, they will manage the day-to-day operations, it's their job. And every business has, has management too. Sure.
Hey, wait a minute, can I add right here?
Sure.
If I'm managing it, maybe I won't work for free.
She has a sense of humor.
She has a sense of humor, God bless her. We need that around here.
Yeah, that we do, definitely.
Here we do.
So anyway, I need a motion to give both Mike and Mary Sue check writing privileges.
I'll motion that.
Okay, need a second?
I'll second it then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, now we get down to, we also have to bond both of those people because they will be the two people that handle money. And I think we have some issues there. We have somebody else who just bonded, and I don't know how that works. It's like automobile insurance, that you can get some of that money back because these only bonded for what, two weeks?
Yeah.
Less than, maybe two.
What, about 600 bucks?
650, I think.
Do you know for what amount they were bonding?
I thought it was 650, but...
The bond itself, it wouldn't be that high. The amount, the amount that the insurance cover... Like 75,000, you mean 100,000?
I don't know that.
Yeah, I don't think you need to bond us for too much. And the reason I'm gonna say that is most of the checks that you'll be handling or I'll be handling aren't gonna exceed large amounts of money 'cause most of what you do should go direct deposit.
Yeah, I think what we tried to do is figure out, if you were to take the money and run and time it, so there was the maximum amount in the checking account, how much could you get away with? So it's more than, do you know what I mean? So we figured that out.
I'm already running.
You don't look at me, do I look like I'm running very far?
Nor, well, we figured it out in 2018.
It's my new.
We bonded them for 75,000. We figured that was about the most that somebody could get at any one time. So I...
That's more than enough for some reason. The more you bond for, the more you're gonna pay.
Yes, but 75,000, that's a relatively small amount comparatively. You know, 75,000 is...
Who do I call for that?
50,000 is what?
Tyler.
When Bobby got bonded, I thought for sure.
Who do you get bonded through? I've never been bonded.
Oh, yeah, that's another shit.
And you know, that might actually work now since you don't have a whole lot of money in the bank, for one, which we're gonna get to. So I guess we need to decide here what we're bonding them for. There's 50,000, 75...
We usually don't go over, what, 100,000, do you?
At any one time, right now it would be difficult to get 50 or 75,000. You might, you might get 50,000. Or it cleaned everything out.
Isn't it better to bond it for the highest number? And then when I talk to the insurance company tomorrow, it can be lower.
You can negotiate, yes.
But if the motion is higher, and with the motion if you put, or less...
All right, you wanna do that?
I agree with that.
Okay.
'Cause that way we're not gonna come back and then do this again.
Right, we don't wanna, we wanna get it right one time.
Are you sure you even had to bond me? All I'm gonna be doing is signing checks.
You might under yourself.
Out at the township, um, the only one who was bonded was our secretary. The supervisors weren't, but it's a different situation.
Yes, but I...
We were paid out there.
I told them I will not, I will not help if I'm the only one to sign. I don't believe in that.
Oh, no, 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 I would sign.
Okay.
That I'm not gonna be handling any money.
Oh, bonded, okay.
That's, that's what I'm saying, I'm not gonna be handling any money. The only thing I will do is sign checks and Mary Sue's gonna have the checking account.
I think because you have, at least as I understood, you're giving me some different information. All the people that I knew that signed checks were bonded in my world, but your world's a little bit different than mine.
Oh, check.
Yeah, check bonded, I mean, I don't care if I'm bonded, I'm just gonna say it.
All right, let's, let's do it that way, leave all this open-ended. We can bond both of them or less, depending on what Joe keep.
So is it a motion, bond both of them for up to, and then...
Yes, and we're saying up to 75,000, I believe. Is that where we're up to?
'Cause like she says, we...
Anything less?
Yeah.
10,000 would be...
I found the thing, it just says Robert Lee is officially bonded, that's all it says.
Notaries are only 10,000.
Oh, we're, we're...
Well, it's kind of important to get the, kind of the right amount here. 'Cause we've, we've already had bad experience here where somebody wiped out some money and it wasn't involved. Yeah, so yeah, we'll get the name of the insurance agent and Mary Sue can talk to him and we'll give her some latitude there. Do we have, did we get everything we needed? Did we get the motions, the vote, we doing it? Yes.
We did it for this yet, so...
We did not, okay, so I need to...
But the motion has to state it like that.
I make a motion to get Mike and Mary Sue bonded for the appropriate amount of money.
Yeah, maximum 75.
Maximum that would be.
Anything less. All right, we're calling? You can, you can tailor, maybe, okay? All right, so I, I need a second. I'll second that. All in favor, or, oh, your throat, sorry. Oh yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, unanimous, all right. Now, anybody wanna volunteer to be the right to know officer?
Oh boy. That might be somebody you have to pay to deal with.
Yeah? That guy works for Jerry, he's about the only one that makes right to know law requests. Pardon me?
The Secretary, the code...
I was thinking of...
Is that right? I thought any officer could be the...
Any officer...
So it can be the right to know officer.
Oh, the Secretary, oh, any?
They shifted it to the Secretary, but any officer can do it.
Yeah.
No, it didn't, that's why I lost the position, 'cause I wasn't on the council.
If nobody wants to jump up and down on that one, we can hold off on that until we have a workshop meeting and discuss it.
So you wanna...
Nobody seems too enthused right now.
Table it to the next one.
Get the new guy here.
Maybe we can sub that out.
Yeah. Let's let that one go for the moment. All right, now, we're, we're down to some interesting stuff at this point. I'm gonna give a little bit of history here. We, we got in a mess here, it came to light in 2019. Well, let me back up a second. Coleport Borough has lost one-fourth of its revenue. One-fourth, without making a corresponding adjustment to their expenditure side. So the only way you were able to survive is by drawing down the savings. So now, eventually you will deplete your savings and the borough will not be able to pay its bills and it will be out of business. So this is dire, absolutely dire. Now, here's a little bit of history I'm going to give you. This all came to light in 2019. We learned at that point that the borough took money out of its employees' wages that failed to pay in, say into Social Security, the IRS, the state IRS, all those payable things. Sometimes they paid, sometimes they didn't pay the right amount, sometimes they didn't file the proper paperwork. Now, from just talking to Mary Sue today, she looked at her husband's records and nothing has been fixed for 2018 that has that he paid zero into Social Security. So all these things, until we resolve this, we will not get liquid fuels or any other state shared revenue. So as near as I can tell, that's costing us a minimum of $35,000 a year. So you see, you cannot continue, we will now have to make, there are no good choices at this point. And I'm gonna do a little comparison. When we had, took over in 2018, we had a business, we took over a business that was losing... we took over a business that was losing twenty thousand dollars. By the end of 2018, we had a nine thousand dollar surplus. We cut twenty-nine thousand dollars and the community barely noticed that. The only thing that they noticed, we took out a few streetlights. So everything came from back office stuff. The insurance was padded, something awful. There, there were just all kinds of things. And, and we never did make it through the entire budget, but we took that much in cost out of it. And in 2018, we didn't get the full benefit of that, but you all did in 2019. And in 2019, as near as I can tell from your bookkeeping, which leaves much to be desired, you lost, check me on this, it was about twenty thousand dollars, Kevin? And at that same time, you gave people a raise, a dollar an hour raise, and made a donation to the fire company.
What year was that, Paul?
That was 2019. Now, I'm just trying to give you a little bit of history. So how we, now, we had, that was one problem that had to be solved two and a half years ago. That problem has not been solved year to date. We still have to solve that problem. Now, however, there are two additional problems why we cannot get liquid, even if we solve that one, we still will not get liquid fuels. And that is because we, we have to have an annual audit. We failed to have an annual audit in 2019 and 2020. Now, if we do 2021, my guess is we're going to get the same results we got every other year. The bookkeepers weren't trained to do this. They used the wrong D C E D categories. So what they're going to tell you is your bookkeeper has to learn how to do QuickBooks and she has to use the proper categories and it will be sixty-eight thousand dollars of improper bookkeeping entries. And I know that because that's what happened in 2017. Then bookkeeper Noel used exactly the same line items that Angel used, therefore she got exactly the same results. It's impossible to pull a young woman off the street, pay her low wage, and expect her to deal with the IRS, Pennsylvania IRS, and Social Security. So we have to outsource this if we can find a bookkeeper that's willing to work for us. So that, that's, that's where we're at. And then there's one other thing that is preventing us from getting liquid fuels. So even if we do that, you, some of you all know what happened to the liquid fuels auditor. And I'm, I'm going to go through that, through the timeline there.
Excuse me a minute.
Go ahead.
How much in liquid fuels has been lost? In what year?
Liquid fuels is approximately twenty-seven thousand dollars that we're not getting from liquid fuels. Then there's another three thousand that you can get from the county, which has to be used for something like cable. So if we don't get liquid fuels, we can't apply for that money. So that takes you to thirty thousand.
Has it been lost for, for two years, you said?
Yes, and we're into the third year now that we're probably going to lose it this year. And then there, I believe, we're losing something called the drilling impact fee, which in 2018, that brought us in five thousand dollars. And there may be some other stuff that I'm not aware of. So, so I'm not exactly sure and I have no numbers to go by, any more than you do. I really don't know what's happening here financially because the accounting's just not as sufficient to give me... No, I asked that question of everybody. How much money came in here in 2020? I don't know and you don't know. So it's, in, in business, there's a saying, if you don't know your numbers, you don't know your business. We don't know our business and I, I don't know what we can do about that, but we're, we cannot pay somebody to go back and redo the first three months or four months of this year either. You know, we paid once to have it done. So I don't, I do not know how all this pans out. So now there's one more problem. Assuming we can solve those two problems, we still will not get liquid fuels. And that is because we now have a problem with the liquid fuels auditor. Thank you. Yeah, I'm going to give you a little, an exact example as best I can from memory, what happened with liquid fuels. In, in July, about July fourteenth, the liquid fuels auditor tried to schedule an audit with Coldport Borough. By November fifth, he was disgusted and he wrote me an email, and I'm not even on this board. And he said, and I sent that to all of you and basically said, "I've been trying since July fourteenth to schedule an audit. Please do this ASAP." At that point, an audit was scheduled. However, he was not provided with adequate information to do the audit. So again, nobody went to, there's usually an exit conference when you have an audit where the guy tells you everything that is wrong. No board members went to that. And none of you went because none of you knew. That, that information was not communicated to you. So then he sent something and on February second, he said, "Please have that to me by February nineteenth." He wanted the president and the vice president. You all never got that. I found that by accident on the mayor's computer on April eighth. April. You know, he wanted it by February nineteenth. So he still does not have that information. We are now messing with this guy's schedule and he works for the auditor general, so he is not a happy camper at this point. So I, I don't know if we can resolve these issues in order to get liquid fuels anytime soon. I, I, I'm not optimistic. It's daunting when you go in there and try to figure things out. So I will try to make an appointment with an accountant to see if we can outsource everything to somebody that actually knows what they're doing and can give us a finance report so we can figure out where we stand. In the meantime, I am quite sure this Borough will operate in the red. So we should probably cut any cost. Now, the, the public will feel this. I said, "We took everything out in 2018. All the fat out of the budget we could. Nobody noticed that." Any cut we make now, they will notice. It, it will not be good. So, so this is a dilemma. There are no, there are no good choices here.
So the person that sent that email and stuff and we didn't know about, is this the same person that you'll go to?
Yes, and I've already contacted him. I, I, I hit him with an email before I was even appointed president. Now, that was on Friday. I sent him an email and I'm, I'm hoping he hasn't responded to me yet. And I don't know, you know, I wrote in, I, I don't know if he wants to mess with us at this point. He, you know, that audit could technically be closed. I don't know at what point he cannot go back anymore.
There were six points, remember?
Yes, the, yes, no. I, I think I asked everybody.
I mean, with us not knowing his stuff, is it possible that, what do you think is, I, I can't speak for him, but so I don't need to...
But here, he has a schedule that he has to meet, so he cannot drag this on indefinitely. He's now into another year. So I, I, I don't know. I'm going to ask him and I'm hoping he responds to me.
Okay.
And that's, that's what we're going to do there. And on these...
And if not, would he, I mean, can you ask for a point of somebody to help us then, that he might recommend?
We're probably going to have to do something just like that.
Okay.
And I, I think we're probably going to have to talk that over as a board. Who are we going, now, I, I have some suggestions here that I'm going to bring up as we go down through this. One of them is Catherine McCusker was working on this stuff before. She kind, you know, she resigned and she became disgusted. I, I think that maybe you and I can get her to, she's done a lot of work there. I want to take her different tact than she took. She was trying to recreate time sheets and just get everything right. My feeling is, let's just call the IRS or whoever and, we know who the workers are. We have their Social Security numbers. Say, let's just assume they worked their maximum hours and put those numbers in. We don't have time sheets. And this is another problem. We do not have supporting documentation for anything. Now, back to, I, I got a backup. I forgot to mention this. Back to the liquid fuels audit.
Where are time sheets now?
You found some of them?
No, no, there's time sheets now, though. Don't make it sound like we don't have any.
Oh, yes, yes, but we don't have them from the past to fix this stuff. So, but some of the stuff we don't have, and you're probably going to have to get this, I mentioned to you, we do not have receipts for the pay-in job down there. That came, twenty-one thousand of that came from liquid fuels. Nine thousand came from county highway aid.
That was one of his major points.
Yes, he wants that receipt. Now, how, now, I know Joe Adam was very meticulous. He was the director at the time and Angel was the bookkeeper. She may not have been the great bookkeeper, but she knew what she had to keep for an audit. She had been through audits. And I know this for a fact, and maybe some other people in this room know that. She had a box by the side of her desk where she threw everything that was required for an audit. Somehow, so much of that stuff is, is just missing. So it's hard to pass an audit if you do not have the supporting documentation. And that, every, every auditor had that same complaint. So we've burned through basically three CPAs at this point. I've never seen anything like this in my entire life and I'm pretty old. I've been around business, you know, for a long time. I've never seen anything like this. I, I don't know. I don't, I don't know that we can fix this. I, I really don't know. I feel like I need a team of accountants around me. We don't have that. And that's not me. I'm, I'm management. I, I need, I need numbers that somebody creates and gives to me and I can interpret them, but I can't create them. And, and so anyway, I'm not, I'm, I'm not trying to minimize this at all. Tonight, when I was coming down here, I, I said, "What in the hell have you done about me? Should I be doing this?" You know, it's like you're just stepping right into a mess and I don't know that I can fix this.
Did you tell how many employees were involved in that?
We, we can figure all of that out. Who was here and what their maximum hours were.
There are three employees involved. No, just one.
No, there were, there were three maintenance people and a secretary. So that's four.
Okay. That's a lot of people.
And Catherine trying to do that mess, it was too much.
Yes.
And then she, she contacted up here and tried to get the secretary to send what she needed. Wasn't done.
And should have to do the same thing three times.
Sometimes three times, she, she'd email to have it set and she...
Now, now, in fairness, Noel was set up to fail. There was no way the day she was hired that she could possibly do that. It was impossible. We gave her, we, we gave her some supervision and she, she probably should have been fired at that point. Now, there's another bridge that's been burned that we have to repair. There was a woman from the state that came here to train Noel. She basically gave Noel a homework assignment. Said, "You call me when you do this." That was the last that woman ever heard of Noel. Now, she's miffed. So Mary Sue will contact her and try to smooth that over and that will be the woman that will help put us in contact with the IRS agent to figure out what we have to do. Again, I think Catherine will be vital here because Catherine is an agent for the federal IRS. So she, she can take care of that in a way we just can't. We just don't have the skill set to do these things. We just don't.
No.
So that's, that's what we're facing. So now, again, if this just keeps rolling on like this, the Borough will go bankrupt. It's inevitable. Now, I'll, in two thousand, at the beginning of 2019, the Borough had eighty-four thousand dollars in savings. As near as I can tell, that could be below fifty-four, maybe even down to forty-four thousand.
What year was that?
Two thousand and nineteen. At the beginning of that, you started with eighty-four thousand dollars in the bank and, and now you're probably down to fifty-four if you're lucky.
It's in that documentation that I gave you and I'd like that back.
Okay, I can get this online.
No, no, that's QuickBooks. They're QuickBooks.
I thought you gave me the right to know form.
Well, no, that's what I requested and I, I just keep everything in order.
Sure, you can go through that.
When was the last audit done and approved?
Two thousand and eighteen was the last audit was done and it was called a no opinion audit, right? So she, she couldn't say, "Is there fraud here or any of that?" But D C E D accepted that audit. Now, here's something we need to talk about. And, and this isn't the, the time right now. I'm not, should we even bother having the 2019 books audited? For example, you're going to pay money to do that. I know exactly what results you're going to get. It's going to say you have sixty-eight thousand dollars in improper bookkeeping entries. You've got to learn how to do QuickBooks. And there's, even if you pass, you get nothing for it. You get nothing. You do not get the liquid fuels and all this stuff for that year because the state closed out that year. So we would be spending money on an audit to tell us junk that we've been told since 2018. The same message over and over and over. And we've never corrected those problems. I, I'm not saying we should or shouldn't, but we need to have that discussion. Do we pay for 2018, 2019? Same thing with 2020. We've lost that money and you, you can check when you talk to these people.
Well, I was going to say, let me check with D C E D and see what they would advise. Maybe to be in some kind of good standing or not saying we didn't skip something.
Right, I, I have no problem. I just brought that up as a, as an option. It was something we need to think about. We need to get more information and you can get that information for us.
Former president and already gave the three audits, didn't she, to somebody?
I, I don't know. I, I don't think there has been a letter of engagement signed by Richard and, and the Borough, as far as I know. But I, but I don't know.
I thought she said she took three of them down, didn't she? I might be mistaken.
Well, well, there has to be a letter of engagement. We have to sign. This board would have had to approve. We want this guy's our auditor and somebody has to sign that.
You didn't do that.
No.
I, I don't know. See, I don't know. I'm going to make an appointment if I can. I'll go down and talk to him and see if he does municipal accounting on QuickBooks.
But I think she took them down, didn't she? Or you don't?
Of course, we did go down to see him.
But I wondered if she took them down. I thought she took...
But tell us about that later.
We have, she didn't take nothing down there. We just, um...
Oh, I misunderstood her there.
Yeah, we just went down there and talked to him. He was going, he was going to look at that. He said, "It wouldn't be till after tax."
Which is about now.
Yeah, and the prices, and they give us a price where we were going to be at.
But he, there was nothing signed saying he would actually do this.
Oh, wow.
Then we brought it to the board and then we voted on that, but nothing has gone yet.
I thought we made a motion, but I think that's as far as we got.
That's as far as we got. Nothing got down to him yet. So...
The president was waiting to enact the ordinance. That was the...
It had to go for thirty days, right?
Yeah.
Well, that, let's, probably enough said there. Here, here's where Mary's, I will do the liquid fuels. I will contact the auditor there. Mary Sue will contact the, the state IRS regarding the, the back taxes. And we'll give you an update. We'll see how that goes. So, so we'll do that now. That takes us down to, I, I'm going to skip the one that says Peg must contact Amy Ritchie at DEP. We, maybe I'll go do that. Can we get a volunteer? Let me, let me tell you what's, who Amy Ritchie is at DEP.
Do you want to spell that, please?
Her last name?
Yeah.
It's right on the...
It's R I T.
She's got it, she's got it right there. All right, here, here's the deal on that. Up here on 1001, 1012 Oak Street, it, it's, it's a blighted property. So DEP came and they're, they feel that the Borough should, should have been doing something that actually prevented it from getting to this point. You want to enforce their ordinances before you have a big mess like you have up there with the blighted buildings. She would like to know what the, what has the Borough done. And if they haven't done anything, we should also be conducting kind of a joint, a parallel and maybe investigation or enforcement of our ordinances and she will enforce the DE, the state laws. And she's primarily concerned, there's about sixty or seventy tires up there. And they become a health hazard because it becomes a mosquito breeding ground. Mosquitoes carry disease. So DEP is interested in those tires. Now, beyond that, there's probably a thousand baby diapers. The people, there were squatters that lived there. They had no garbage service. They lived on one lot and threw all this stuff on to another lot. And Borough was kind of behind. We're going to enforce our ordinances. And we, we have to do that as well. And that's, that's kind of coming up. So let's, there's no act, no other action required on those things that I just mentioned. I just wanted to give you a little history lesson and now you have that. So now we're going to move on. You were going to enact an ordinance in order to have an, an independent auditor. That, that would have been a mistake. You have to amend the codified ordinances. You already have an ordinance that's outside of the codified ordinances, so you'd have just been making another one if the first one wasn't good. Let me go back in time. Another history lesson here.
I was going to say explain.
Oh, okay. We codified these ordinances in 2014. We gave those ordinances to Borough Council and Borough Council, they never understood them. They didn't like it. They thought it was a waste of time. They sat on them for two years. And we all went in 2016 and we forced them to pass the codified ordinances. The difference is here, the old ordinances would be the equivalent of a dictionary where the words are thrown in randomly. So if you wanted to find muskrat, you'd have to start in page one and you'd just have to look. That's how the old ordinances work. These ordinances are like a real dictionary. So if you want to, if you want to, did you guys read them? I sent them all. If you get a chance to look through them. And basically you can see all the traffic ordinances are neatly in one section, you know, and...
Yeah.
That makes sense. You can find stuff and it's, it's easy to use. So, okay, now, so between 2014 and 2016, the Borough, when we did them in 2014, they had elected auditors. So that's, so you didn't have to put anything in the ordinances. The Borough Code takes care of that. In two thousand and fifteen, they hired an independent auditor. But they failed to put that in the codified ordinances, which they approved in two thousand and sixteen. So that is why that never made it into the codified ordinance. So now here's the deal on this. The borough, the intent of council was to go to an independent auditor. They made a procedural error. It's just a procedural error. It should have been in the codified ordinances. Now, if, if that, if Mr. Strong tells me he's going to audit our books and we don't have this done. Are we gonna say, well, it's a procedural error? Or we're gonna lose, you know, do you want thirty-five thousand dollars or do you want, you can do it right and lose thirty-five thousand dollars. You can do it as we are and I'm going after the thirty-five thousand bucks. Do you know what I mean? And my argument is the intent of council was to pass this ordinance. Now, we will get this fixed. Jerry helped me find the, the actually ordinance books that I thought were missing. They are here. So we can amend this. It, it has been advertised. So we can't do it tonight, but we will have a meeting and I'll send you everything we need and we will. And I think if you read that, you gotta read it a couple of times, but you, you, you kind of figured out how it works, how to amend them. Did you grab that? Did you get a chance to study that, Kevin?
A little bit.
Yeah, it was like twenty something pages. I think I was on.
You know, I didn't want you to read the whole thing. I just.
I think I was on number like ten or twelve, like.
Oh, no, don't, don't.
I'm trying, I'm trying.
All I want you to do is read section one hundred and in that section, look, did you read that? How you amend them?
Well, I'm ahead of that now, so.
Yeah, well, what I want you to do, we all need to know how to amend them. I forget. I don't use this stuff and time goes by. I have to reread it. But you shouldn't rely on just one person to know these things. Everyone on council should be equally competent and be able to do this. So when some of us are gone, there's somebody left on board that will know how to do this.
Yes.
So, so that's where I'm coming from. We will learn. Now, there's another thing. We will miss, make mistakes. We're going to, and I hope you cut us some slack, Jerry. We're not perfect. We're not God. Now, when we figure out that we make a mistake, no matter how embarrassing it is, we're gonna correct that mistake. And we're, and the other thing, everybody makes mistakes, but to make the same one over and over, that's where I have a problem. Like hiring some young girl and paying them in their wage to do a bookkeeping. When it didn't work one time, you don't keep doing it over and over and getting the same results. You have to say, man, something's wrong here. So I don't want to make the same mistake and sometime we'll sit down and we'll decide what is the most stupid things we could do. We'll identify those things and we won't do them. You know what I mean? I don't want to make, do the most, but we'll make enough mistakes that it is because this is complicated stuff, you know? You can't all be experts on the code. We do the best we can. But, but that's, that's basically so now. That, that takes us now down to the miscellaneous stuff. You all have that. I gave you one agenda and then I added to it. The sinkhole down there has, it's been there for a decade. We're going to lose, it will never get any smaller. We're going to lose for, loose forest street. So I want Mike here to look into repairing that sinkhole.
Can you let these guys know where the sinkhole is and like what it's doing?
Yeah, it's right, it's straight down the road, right, right down here. We're on, this is.
Is it like a bucket garage?
Yes, right. There's a big hole.
I guess there's.
You know what I mean? Yeah, there's a great big hole.
On my pastor, nobody told me about the sinkhole. I could have been down in. I don't know.
A driver, somebody.
It was at night.
Somebody could drive in there, walk in there. I, I have a friend who's a visually challenged individual and he, he was kind of making fun of this. He said, you know, it'd be real easy for me to lay down in there and take a few photographs. You know, the borough's in trouble here. So we, I mean, it's, we have to fix that. No.
I believe somebody said we do have the pipe.
We have the pipe, yes, and we have, and Calvin will help out. You will help out and Walt is here. They're gonna look at it and assess it. It has changed since Calvin bought the pipe. It, it, and it will keep changing. It'll just keep getting bigger.
Bigger.
Yeah, so soon already, we're putting our workers in harm's way by asking them to maneuver around that and get into that garage. So wrong move from somebody, a worker's down in there or the truck is down in there. And we're, we're, I mean, it's gross negligence. We will be liable for something like that. So you'll look into that, Mike and.
Yep.
Will you, you will want to contact Calvin as ASAP. Appreciate it, Mike.
Yep.
All right.
Is he still, is he still working?
No.
He's off. This is a good time to contact him.
Right now he's off. I think they all lost their job where he was at for the, you know, so. I know he has a vacation coming up to the beach, but I think that's in May, so.
He won't go to school till.
We worked, we had, it's lost in D E P right now. We, we had it the whole way through conservation, everything right up to it and then Rebecca left and she.
Oh, I know. We have the pipe and if we, if these guys can do it, we're going to do it.
They didn't want anything to be done until it was approved.
I, I, I guess. It's, they, they can claim it if they want, but we're gonna do it. I, that's up to them. If they want to come and dig, dig it out, that's fine. You know, one of the arguments I heard, and I don't even know if this is true, that the water is polluted. Well, the water is polluted. Well, pipe does not change the quality or the quantity of the water, you know? Why should we lose a street, forest street because the water is polluted? So we're doing it. It's our, our road, our creek, our building and we will fix it if we can fix it. And I'll let that up to you, Mike.
But if you want to contact Mr. Snyder, he will help you.
I, I'll just stick with whoever I have here. I don't know. But Mike, I have another job for you.
You and I will talk over that pipe.
Yes, good enough.
Just don't go too close.
Along with Kelvin and.
Yes, all right. Keep, keep me posted. I, I rely on what you guys say. That's, that's, I'm out of my element there, but you aren't. So I, I listen to what you tell me, in other words. All right, here's, I have another job for you, Mike. I know you're gonna ask for more money on this.
Yeah.
Can you find out how much it would cost to finish resurfacing Spruce Street and upward to where the good pavement is? I mean, that's a disgrace. You're coming right into City Hall here. And you have to pay tax there.
Yeah, I'll have to get some numbers, but I, I knew the people that used to be down there, Municipal Services.
Okay. Now, that may seem like a contradiction. On the one hand, we're talking about dire situation going bankrupt. So let me explain one more thing. Liquid fuels is restricted money. You cannot use that to pay the, the water bill, for example. So if, if we may, I, I, if we don't do something, we're going to lose three thousand dollars a year from the county. There's nine thousand dollars there that we can draw down right now. If we were to do some paper paving project. It never gets over nine thousand dollars. So every year there's three thousand dollars we won't be getting. That bugs me to no end.
Yeah.
You know, here's one other point while we're talking about that. There's going to be all kinds of stimulus money that will be available to municipalities. We will get none of that because of the, and that, and that is a crime that we will get none of that money. So.
And grants.
What's that?
And grants.
And lots of that. There will be grants, yes. The chances are.
But we don't know how close we are to paying it off or.
Paying what off?
You know, or paying towards it.
Towards what?
That, get rid of the red flag.
Oh, it's more than that. That's what I'm saying. That's just one of three issues. We have a total of three. The chances of solving all three of them are about, you know, are very marginal. And we're already into April here. I, I, I cannot be optimistic. I wish I could be. I mean, I'll give this my best shot. I'll work really hard and all of us will. But I, I'm, I wish I could say I can, I can solve this and burn and get that money. I, I'm not into deluding myself for one.
Peg has a good point. We kind of need to find out, we do need to find out exactly how, what we have to do to get that red flag.
Well, I want that, yes. That'll be up to you and Catherine. I, I want that red flag removed. I'm not saying we should ignore anything. I'm just saying in terms of getting this grant money and stimulus money, I, I really hope we can do it.
I have a funny feeling things were be, getting paid, but there were late fees.
Yeah.
And it didn't work. It just kept going on. The late fees kept going on and there were what you paid.
I want to hear.
It's a Z block is actually what it is.
I've never heard that word except from here. It's just, I always use the word block. I don't know where the Z block, but anyway.
Paul, can you give us a couple of examples of what liquid fuels is used for? You said paving.
Yeah, you, you can use it for paving. You can pay, say Walt is plowing the roads in the winter time. This is why this is a little bit confusing. You can pay his wages. So some of this is for capital expenditures and some of it can be used in your operating budget. Now, the way our budget is done here, we're mixing cap, money that can only be used for capital expenditures in with your operating budget. Some of that is my fault and I did this intentionally. When I was here in two thousand and eighteen, I didn't know anything about this. I just had to find every source of revenue. I needed to know how much money was coming in. It was never set up to be an operating budget. But we have, we now have to do that. So you have to split those two. Now there, the accountant can tell you, they will have a way of maybe just putting it on the, the, on the income statement and saying this is restricted funds or on the budget. Just say, write restricted. So we know that doesn't count for everything. Like the one from the highway aid, completely restricted. It doesn't go for anything else.
Paul, would it, would it pay you to have two accounts? Liquid fuel account and general account?
We do have liquid fuel, but I mean from our operating, from operating this whole thing, your operating budget. Some money from liquid fuels. Say if Walt is plowing or doing blacktop out cold patch. You can then pay his money, uh, his wages out of liquid fuel. So it gets a little confusing. I'm not an accountant, so I don't know exactly how you show that on your budget. But the, but a professional accountant will know that. Do you know what I mean? So we can keep track.
The employees have a sheet, what they do every day and Mike, you'll look at this is where it'll say like the pay and then there's liquid fuels on the bottom. So if he's plowing the stuff, he'll put like an hour and a half. That's what he did for, out of liquid fuel money. So you'll notice that. And then it takes a little bit easier. It took me a while to get it to down, pin it. But now I'm getting used to that because I'm like, what is that? Why is it separate? But it all makes sense to what it goes for.
Yeah, I kind of, I understand it because of my experience.
Yes.
There's one more thing. Are you all aware that the borough owes liquid fuels four thousand dollars? Did you pick up on that from the exit memorandum that I asked everyone to bring and to read? We have to pay back, and you're kind of paying yourself, but in a way you're not. So we have to take money from general revenue, four thousand dollars and put it back in liquid fuels because of an improper expenditure. I don't know what she did. One year Angel bought coal and that, that does not fall under there. So we had to pay that money back. So that means our liquid fuel account is going to go up, but our general revenue account is going to go down. And that's our operating budget. That's where we run into trouble because we can't, won't be able to pay all our bills. Now, my guess is we will make it through this year. If we, even if we do what we're doing, but then next year you're gonna have no money to fall back on and then you go out of business. You can't pay your bills. So we don't want it to come to that and we can't make that decision here, but we have to make hard decisions. Now, I've already talked to Mike and suggested that Walt put in just the minimum of hours. Do what has to be done. Fire the furnace, but keep it as low as possible, but do those things, the sinkhole that we talked about. And then we have to hire somebody as well. Do you want to do that? We can advertise. Do you want us to hire someone for you or do you want to hire your own staff?
Yeah, I'll let you guys hire and just let me be part of it.
Okay, we're, we're gonna hire an eighty-year-old man.
That's right. That's why we'll all, we'll all work just as hard as each other.
Okay, all right, Mike.
I would like.
So you want us to do that, then advertise?
Yeah, I would like to advertise and if you don't mind, Mike, I would like for you to sit in on that too.
Yeah, I'd like to.
Because you gotta work in with them. Yeah, you gotta work with them. Now, the problem there, we're, we're asking to hire somebody, but we want their wages at least, I mean their hours low. That, that's a disincentive. People won't be too excited about working for us. You know what I mean?
So I can't, I can't advertise for that until he observes and sees how many hours Walt is cut down and how much he wants for.
Yeah. Let me, let me talk to Walt and see what him and I need to come up with. I want to see what he needs.
I, I would.
Just hang off like a little while here.
Yeah.
I, I don't want to put a lot of stress on Walt.
I noticed there's like two man jobs that need to be done.
They have to, have to.
Yes, and those might be a few hours of the day, but there's some things that, you know, takes one or something like that. But we can look at that too when I was looking at the list.
We need to make this clear that you're not doing too much of the manual labor here, maybe in the sinkhole.
I hope not. Let's put it that way. Let's put it that way.
You're an eighty-year-old man.
I'm willing to help out. You know, to, to a certain extent. Now, don't forget I'm working.
Yes.
Part-time.
Right.
And I'm usually going in the morning and back by lunchtime. I don't work Fridays, but, uh, you know, there's things I gotta do too, but.
But you're gonna touch base here and see that people work when they should.
I'll work with Walt a little bit too.
Okay.
You know, I mean.
And you'll find the projects.
He's gonna have grass he cut down in the park on my own.
All right, here's something else. I know somebody that might volunteer to do that. A guy, I, I met a guy out in the parking lot. He said several years ago, he, he asked to volunteer to cut the grass. Maybe that's something we should talk about.
Well, John's grandpa.
Yeah, my grandpa.
Did it for years and years and years.
Okay.
Yeah.
He's not here with us anymore.
So you know, he would want to use our, our riding mower and ride around in the park. We should discuss that. I have no problem with it.
Let me talk to Walt, see what he needs, because you know, due to summer here, maybe a couple of hours with me, I can help him out a little bit and keep our, keep our costs down, you know?
And there, there's other stuff that you identified. We've talked about. Can I, don't you bring it up about the catch basins? You know more, you explain.
Well, I don't know a whole lot, but we need to go around, look at some of the drainage issues and see if we can't resolve a little bit. Give Kelvin a lot of credit because when him and Walt were working together, he did get a lot of the drainage going in the right direction.
The, the problem is that the, what do you call it? The catch basin is higher than the road. So the water runs around it rather than into it. That doesn't, you, you know, what's the point?
Cause it's a nice, it's a nice puddle, that's why.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so, but, but it's hard to fix, right?
Yeah.
We can see, we can talk about it, but to, to fix that stuff is.
Yeah.
It's tough, tough going.
I believe it.
She needs to know how many hours to put in the paper and what the cost would be, what, what did you pay is why she's.
Yeah.
A question.
No, that's, I said, we'll wait until Mike and.
Right.
And we'll work on that.
Well, you can go inside.
Yeah, let us, we don't need to har- hire anybody in the next two weeks, do we? You know, give us a chance to pull things over.
Yeah, talk to.
This is Andrew's last week, isn't it?
Well, Andrew's here until this Friday.
All right.
He wasn't, he didn't come in today.
I thought he was done last week.
No, no.
That's what we all thought. It was miscommunication.
He had this week to go down yet.
It's a resignation.
Let, let me move on here. We're down to, you know, when you guys try to stream here, I've got a D S L speed tester. You got eleven megabytes per second. You, you got this primitive dinosaur stuff in there.
Cole Winstrm.
Yeah, it's not their fault. Yeah. But, but if you look, we have the last generation equipment. For some reason, everybody got a free upgrade except Coldport Borough. So somebody probably.
Cause we didn't put a word in.
Yes, I, I would.
We didn't call and ask for that free upgrade.
So somebody needs to look at that. Call Winstrm. There's two, I, I want to volunteer for this. There's two things we want to do. We want to upgrade the equipment to more modern equipment, number one. Number two, we need to look at our bill. Now, from looking at your finance sheet, you're paying over two hundred dollars a month. If I, if this, am I right on this for the Winstrm bill?
Oh, yes.
They're charging you commercial rate.
Pardon me?
They're charging you commercial, commercial rate.
Yeah, cause that was the next thing.
Well, somebody should actually look at the bill like you guys did with the light bill. Actually.
That was the next thing.
You want that one, Sean? Do you take that one? And you'll call and get the upgrade and everything and look at the bills like you did before?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, that way we know what we're talking about. I've never looked at the bill and none of us have.
And also, some of the things need upgrades. There's definitely, well, no, that's not a state grant. There are grants to get technology for municipalities and things too, so.
All right, I think that's, if you find out, we can try. All right, that takes us down to, I already have a volunteer for Facebook page, New Manner right here.
Good. We're having trouble getting somebody.
Yeah, I kind of described some of the stuff.
Well, I already screwed that up if he's on there. I'm just so sorry. I was a little tired.
Well.
Lot on my mind.
You kind of know what we want to put there. We, we want these resignations on there. We would like the finance report. We don't have one now, but the minutes, agenda, and even the ordinances when we get that. You can handle that stuff, you think?
I think we'll be able to just put it in, because we're gonna upload it like a photo.
Okay.
So to go into different, kind of, different albums, like, well, good ordinances, resignation album, like, and so people can go through.
Okay, and, and then at some point.
And that's for the technology, so that's even perfect.
Counselors.
I'll give you the, um, uh, Kevin just gave me the username and password. I can give it right to you then.
Oh, did I take that away from you? I'm sorry. Do you want to do that?
No, no. I just said I screwed it up. Why would I want it now? I'm gonna take a picture, but I'm not.
Yeah, I thought you were so disappointed over there.
No, I'm not disappointed.
All right.
No, I'm not. I think he'd be great at it. I've seen some of his stuff. Yeah, I think. And he can, I'm not really good, I still ask my kids about technology, so I'm not really good at it. And I'm learning, but.
I would like to see more transparency here.
But I would like to see a lot more than what it's on there now.
Yes, I'm gonna take that down. Just, just start over. Just wipe it out. Yes, I'm, I'm gonna take that down, just, just start over, just wipe it out and-
Yes, if you wanted better pictures for the thing or something, go right ahead, yeah.
So, and then he's eventually gonna set it up, so I think it would be nice if each of us periodically communicated with the public, educate them on one little topic at a time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then we're, we're far from that at this point, and the way we're going here, maybe we'll never get to that.
That's as easy as just making administrators on the page, like, it'll all post this for poor bureau, it'll post your names, it'll-
That's fine, it's great.
Well, you, you kinda, if you need anything, ask, and you kinda know what we want in there, and you'll get those things routinely, being a councilman, if you just take it upon yourself initially, put them up there. Can we give you the resignations, can you get them up there, I would like people to see that.
Yes.
So you have copies, you can make them a copy, and Diane, do you want a copy of that?
I could just take a picture with my phone, it's alright.
Great, that's, that's great, that's perfect, thank you. All right.
And I think maybe at every month or something, he can just keep on tabs on it, and if there's anybody that wants comments or something, then-
And I would like to encourage that, I, I want people, as long as it's simple, you know, if people just get on and say you stupid ass me, well, then that, that, that goes nowhere, but if I want a decent conversation, we, we can respond.
Okay.
All right, let, let's take this down, another one. Mike, you, you gave, I'm gonna let you do this one as well, you saw the garbage piled up somewhere, and, and you guys, hold on, I wanna, I gotta get Mike in here talking about the garbage that we've, that he, he found, he's out there and sees.
There's a trailer downtown, they're on Main Street, by Josie's, and the trash is starting to pile up there pretty good.
Oh, yes.
Huh?
Yes.
You know, I don't know if we can call, uh, Clearfield County Solid Waste.
They will take care of it, they will re, they will refer to you and say, you have to enforce your own ordinances.
Yeah, I'm gonna write a letter, they're not the only ones.
We don't know, he knows, I don't know who says mercy.
I mean, I guess you could tell me later, but, uh, what's all around, like what's-
I don't know exactly, Ladan, you gotta, 'cause I didn't get out of the car and go look, some of it's covered up with blue tarps. You know, and it's, it's on the porch, and, and you know, I've seen different pile of bags, John.
That's not the only place.
Are you familiar with where all that, okay.
We have never gotten to this, every time we try to get to our ordinances, something, like, like right now, the finances have to take precedent, it just has to, there's no money, you can't do anything.
Well, Peyton says she's gonna write, write a letter.
I send a letter to all those people with the, they're not the only ones, there's other people saying.
We actually appointed code enforcement officers, we had Calvin and Joe Adam, and they were actually a fairly good team, and they were taking the, you read the ordinance book, so you kinda, some of those, that one section, it'd be easy to enforce, but really wouldn't be that hard, and you can find people, you, you, you can enforce your ordinances, there are laws. And it's just like the state laws, we have the authority to, to do that, so.
They were good to work with, Joe and Calvin.
Yes, yeah, they had the right temperament and everything, you know, 'cause you're confronting people about something bad, and they, they weren't mean about it, they were fair. All right, so that takes us down to, all right, the next one is, have you noticed if you send the borough an email, you instantly get a reply back and it says the office is no longer open due to COVID? I, I personally didn't like that, I mean, why is that still happening? Do, should that be?
I don't think we, I don't think we ever, I think with the whole thing going on, I just don't think we ever took it off to know that we didn't, I don't think we ever said when we would come back in to where people can-
I asked the question, is this office open or closed?
Yeah.
Well, it shouldn't have been open, it shouldn't have been open, except for the public wasn't to be up here at a certain time.
Pretty much, no, can't they commit it for mass?
Sure, sure, but this is, I, I don't know.
They can come in if they want, but
Well-
Well, this has to go with everything that just happened too, so those hours and stuff that, you know, some of these-
Do you, do you know what I'm, did you actually read it, it, it's, it just says for the public safety and right to no law request will be denied right now.
You could, you could turn that off.
Yes, I, I know, I know we can turn it off, I just wanna know, does this board wanna turn that off, I wanna know where everybody stands.
Oh, yeah.
Let's get that off there, yeah. Yeah, we just have to get on the computer.
And we just have to, to, um-
Vacation response or setting or something, just turn it off.
Just keep the hours that we're, we're norma do, right, I mean, is that probably a problem?
Well, she's there, all right.
Well, that's what we need to know, 'cause I mean-
Yes, what are your hours going to be, and, and you can only, if you want any good one there, we-
We're helping Ken, just like-
Let's give us some time to figure out, all right, and we will address that.
Yeah, because we don't wanna, I don't wanna put something on there and not somebody be up here.
Right, and that's, that's been happening, that, that, those problems with taxes and other things.
If you come up on the wrong day, you might see Kevin answering phones, I don't know, like, I mean-
Well, you, you can see, and, and these things pale in comparison to the finance stuff, but, but we can do, we can chew gum and walk at the same time, I hope, at least a little bit. I think that, all right, so we've got down, one more thing, and Maricel, I'll turn this one over to you. I, I just put it as street sweep down there, it's, and I think you all talked about this, you have a good idea.
You have the handout about the, on your agenda, I laid it there. And I apologize for the sloppiness because you're, um-
Well, you're fired.
Your, your maintenance man just gave it to me twenty minutes before he came.
And he's fired.
He's, he's a-
We're hardcore here.
It looks good.
He, well, I, I needed it written down, so this Lewis Con, Lewis Construction in Houstale does be carry a township's sweeping. And, and it's contained, it has its own water, it gathers the stone, and unless the stone for the borough to reuse it. And Randy Blaken, Walt, did a approximate with what he does on the Bucaria roads. It probably would take him about eight hours to do the burrows. At an estimated, now this is estimated, at one thousand eighty-nine dollars. Now, here's what the borough maintenance has to do. We need new brushes, they're three hundred nine dollars, Walt already checked on that. Um, it takes two men, a day and a half to install the new brushes, because of all, you'll have to ask him, 'cause here's how I got me to do this, you know, there's a lot of work in doing this.
Right.
So there's some money there. It takes two men one day to sweep one street. They'll sweep a street and then they'll put it in piles. And then they go back a different day, and he said sometimes they can't get back to it right away, 'cause something else might come up. And then they take that stone and they spread it in the alleys. Um, they also have to wait and pick a day when it is wet, because the dust flies all over. And it isn't just to protect the men, it's, they don't wanna blow it all over everybody's houses. Um, 'cause there's no water in our machine, and he said the operator eats the dust.
Right.
And we have approximately, approximately twenty streets. Um, so there's an estimated cost of about what, this is all estimated. Now, you have time to sit down and do an exact thing. But with the labor and equipment, that's what the borough's looking at versus what this guy can do with the machine in one day.
Yeah, and I know we had talked about it before, when it came up, was a good idea to have, to use, uh, the contractor.
But, um, he did ask that if you would choose to go with the contractor, he requests that you do purchase the new brushes. Because then he has them on, and if they have to spot clean something, it's here he can do that. Mike, are you familiar with this, um, Lewis Construction?
Yeah, I'm familiar with everything as far as repairing the, uh, putting the new brushes on, you know, and I think we can take care of that, that would be no problem, putting the new brushes on. Paul said earlier about, um, spending money, you know, maybe this isn't the time to spend money on this project, I'm not-
Yeah, I don't know, I'm just comparing-
Is, is it something that we really need to do this year? I, I didn't look around, I didn't talk to Walt, you know what I mean?
If, if, when you're operating blind, it's just hard, you know what I mean?
You know, and maybe the streets do really need swept bad, I don't know, I didn't really just go around looking. Maybe Walt and I can talk it over and, and decide what we wanna do, maybe, like you said, you're trying to cut money out of the budget right now, and-
That's why I told him-
But we just don't know, we just don't know.
That you needed the other side, I said, Walt, you have to balance what it would cost for that machine versus what you're paying to do it here, and that's when we came up-
Yeah, and I understand exactly where you're at, I'm just thinking maybe we could leave it go for a year and-
Go to either of them.
Yeah.
No, don't go for a year.
Don't say that.
Walt came in my office today and told me he's gonna be sweeping Main Street and wanted to give you a notice.
Okay, that, yeah, let me ask one-
You know, if you guys wanna do it, then, you know, I'm fine.
Excuse me, so, that, what Jerry said, it, it isn't Walt that's gonna sweep the streets. It's this, uh, Wednesday and Thursday, the twenty-first and twenty-second, that the vehicles have to be off Route fifty-three, because, because PennDOT comes once a year to sweep.
What's the dates, I missed it.
It's the twenty-first and twenty-second, that's this Wednesday and Thursday. And he contacted everybody today except one person, and I will call that person tonight. But, um, that's, you really have to press them, because sometimes they won't call and tell you they're coming, and they have to go around all the, the cars, and what good does it do, you know?
Doesn't even, it's hard on a business, it's too-
Because then they have to get out and sweep it themselves.
I'll get this in a minute, there's something else I wanted to bring up.
I already got a copy of that.
Oh, you got a copy, okay.
I gave that to them.
Regarding these brushes, I, I asked you, how long does a brush last in a township?
You get a couple years out of them.
Okay, now you would have about ten times the amount of roads to, to sweep as we do, we get three years. To me, that doesn't seem like very much for three and a half mile of streets, what's something wrong there?
I don't know, I, you know, I mean, I'd have to see them sweeping to determine if, you know.
But just from what you described, if you get three years in a township, where you have-
I, I've put them brushes on before, and, you know, I'm willing to help Walt put them on.
Okay.
You know.
And when you get all these holes in the road, maybe that's-
No, no, and, and it is, it's, it's a lot of dust. It can be a lot of dust, you know.
The, the other way is cheaper in my mind, no doubt about that, I'm, I'm for that, and I'm also for your point, geez, I don't know where we stand, I ju, financially, I know it isn't good, I just don't know how deep in the red we're going to be.
Well, I, I see the budget and I see the both sets. Now, what I think is, we could probably this year, go and hire somebody to get them done right. He has the water thing and stuff, we don't.
It's a better job.
And it's a lot cheaper, but then we still can purchase the brushes, so whenever they have time on one of those, I'm not gonna say a rainy day, but one of those times, 'cause, you know, they could put those brushes, and we still have the brushes for the next couple years to do that. But maybe it just needs one big, nice, big-
Cleaning.
Cleaning.
Well, you said you were gonna take your chance and spend the money for it, is what you're saying.
I mean, compared to what-
We're already, yeah, I, I don't know, I, I-
Paul, why don't you just have a motion table till next month, and so, the next meeting's only what, two weeks away? Two weeks away, that would be my thing.
And maybe we can sit on this and think about it, I mean, we still have time and stuff, so.
And see, see where we're at financially.
Do you need a motion table?
We probably won't know, we're not gonna know anything at the next meeting that we, about our finances, we'll know no more then than we do now. We'll know nothing, we'll be sitting at this table trying to make decisions without proper information. I'm personally, I'm real uncomfortable with that, as a businessman. But I, I don't know what to tell you, I, I don't know what to do in this situation. All I know is I don't know how much money's coming in here and how much we're spending, I have no idea.
I have to pull and work real hard.
There's a possibility, and this is a possibility, I'm not saying yes or no. But there's several groups in town, you know, the street fair's going on again, hopefully this year, after being canceled last year. And we also have the streetscape committee, so maybe some money from other places could be pulled to help the borough with that.
We, we just have to decide, we're, we're gonna make a decision in the dark.
But it's still gonna be table till next month.
I, I, I have no problem with that, right?
I mean, I know you went by an estimate cost, is there any chance we can call him and say, what is your rate for the eight hours?
Well, I think they do.
And how many?
I don't know where he came up with this.
I, I thought he did call him, I thought he did-
And it was a hundred thirty-five an hour.
Or something like that.
This table will till next month and we'll get some more information.
But we do have a committee meeting next week.
But we gotta do something for the street fair and-
Yeah, yeah, if we're gonna do it, you gotta do it, I, I'm, I'm with you on that.
That'll be May, that'll be May already.
Well, it's already, yeah.
Well, who's at a committee meeting like?
Yeah, we have a committee meeting next Wednesday.
All I'm saying, at that committee meeting and at the regular meeting, we will know no more about our finances than we know right now, we'll know nothing.
Depends on how fast we work.
We'll see if we can get some-
Well, you can't do miracles, I, I-
Actually, we can use the money in liquid fuels, whatever's left in there, I mean, just the-
Can you use another fuels for that?
We can, and we didn't have a real bad winter, we should, you know, save some money.
Yeah, there was a lot of stone because of the ice.
I don't know that you can do that, do you know, can you use liquid fu, fuels for street sweeping?
I think you can, and I can't see why not, it's in street maintenance.
Right.
I mean, I'm not saying a hundred percent, but that's street maintenance.
Well, there's a list somewhere I saw, what you can use and what you can't.
I was gonna say, I would like to see that list, 'cause that would be helpful.
Yeah, you, you don't want that stuff down drains, you know, so.
No, no, that's right.
I, I, I just wanna see.
Well, right, there you create an even bigger problem, sometimes the stingy man spends the most. You know, it's like the guy that doesn't change his oil will be changing his engine.
I need a chart for quotes from Paul.
I'd like to see us do it just for the-
Anyway, is it a jolting still? You guys are all right with Peyton and that, and talk about it at the workshop and a little more detail, it's up to you, do it.
I, I think we should talk about it a little more next one.
I don't, I don't know, you know.
Let, let's do that, there. All right, in that case-
I don't see too much.
I have nothing else, that's, that's my whole, anybody else have anything else?
Yeah.
We'll do something.
You have something?
No, no, no.
Do I have a mo, do we out of here then?
No, I do, we do need to get him set up with an email to the borough.
Just use your regular email that I use, or do you want a special email?
I think we all have like a borough ones, this is what we've been using for things.
I, I don't, I'm just gonna stick with the one.
So we can very soon do-
I need to run in, I need to run in, I have lots of stuff in lots of places.
So what do you do, check each one?
Yeah.
Figure that out, I'm trying to figure, do you know how to do that?
Oh, so, you know, speaking of email, when you, I've learned the last time I was here, email is not a hundred percent reliable, and that's the reason I ask, if, if you get an email, just fire back a got it, or you don't have to-
Did you get mine?
I did get yours, yes.
Well, I'm just trying to figure that out on my phone, it's easier to run on.
I, I didn't know if you all got it, so I talked to Paige and she didn't, but her computer was offline, so, oh God, nobody got it. That's why I sent it twice, you know, I didn't know, so if you just get something, if you want, we'll do that.
I'll, I'll take that note down for the minutes that the borough needs, that the mayor needs to get online.
Yeah, yes.
I understand, Larry, I understand.
And we'll probably have to get your email as well.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that'd be nice.
Oh, you don't have one, all right. We're, we're just gonna drag you guys into twenty-first century kicking and screaming and-
John, here's the-
He's trying with me.
I do appreciate it, John.
They say it's hard to teach an old dog to be tricked.
Can you let Diane get some photographs there?
Can I take pictures of those and I'll get them right back to you?
No, we're not gonna allow it. Need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
In a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.